Okay, will the -- please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, are normally approved at city council meetings, will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular reading of January 19, 2016, and approval of claims in the amount of $286,849.78, and payroll expenses of $96,191.70. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, seconded by Dr. Hannaford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Item number six is Reports from Boards and Officers. Mr. Fisher can give us a recreation board meeting.
Yes, we discussed the majority of the discussion was over the rec center, the master We had some questions about the financials, and Joe Don, who's sent us emails clarifying those, and that's pretty much all of it.
Will council have any questions?
I'd just like to make the comment that I was able to see that plan at Rotary last week, and it was nice to see that plan finally come to fruition.
Yes.
It looked really nice.
Is that plan subject to council approval, or should I just have to approve Monday or December?
That'd be approved just by the AOC.
Except for budget.
Well, anything that would affect the budget, yeah, we need to go to budget form.
Anything else for Jack? Thanks, Jack. Tourism Board meeting from January 20th?
Well, they did have a meeting with two basic disminuts and claims. They did make an approval of the amount not to exceed $23,350 to the race big cruise and car show, and that was all that they had addressed at the meeting.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunn? Thank you. Mr. Miller, please give the Finance Committee a report this evening.
This evening, Finance report, we review our cash and investments. Currently, our cash, it is slightly decreasing. We did have some large purchases at the airport for the water line replacement, so those have made a dent in the cash. Currently, we do have enough cash on hand for six months' worth of operating expenses as things stand right now. That is just cash, that doesn't include the investments that we've got after we've been signed purchase order and claim, and that would be the majority of what took our time up this evening. I just want to make a quick note that we are going to be sending out, the Personnel Committee is going to be sending out emailing and evaluation forms to the City Manager. Please fill that out and get it back to either Dr. Hannaford or myself in the next couple weeks.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Miller?
City Mayor's report. I attended the Congress of Mayors last week in Guthrie, and it was a really great event. I've kind of wondered on some of these events if they are, you know, what, one, were they going to be great, were they going to be a waste of time, were they going to be good information, that kind of thing. Everything that I've gone to so far with the OML and the Congress of Mayors is no different. There's a lot of people out there in council seats and mayor's seats, just like we are, that are going through similar things, and it's just been a really good experience participating in the OML activities that I've been a part of. We did come up with resolutions in the areas of economic development, public safety. There were, when all those are finalized or printed out, I'll bring them back and share them with the council members, but those will be the items that Mayor's Congress has pushed for either the governor's office or the state legislature to, you know, look at when they do their work this spring. So I'll make sure and bring that to you guys when those are printed out and distributed. I have had some phone calls lately on some different issues from citizens. Kathy Ernest had actually emailed me a while back, and I told her that the next opportunity I got at the council meeting, I'd share her thoughts, but she's concerned about the appearance of our city. I know last week whenever, or last meeting whenever they were here with the training that we had, there were some issues brought up with the appearance of our city, and so I think that's one of the things that she wanted me to make sure and share with you. She has some other concerns about other things that are kind of tied to some ordinances that haven't been looked at in a while. I will, I have her emails that I'll be happy to share with you, and she said she wouldn't mind that as well, so I'll send those out to council members so that they can read them. But that kind of leads me into follow-up for what we did in the last January meeting. We, I feel like, and of course I would like for the council members to weigh in on this over the next couple of weeks, but I think it would be good if we got together with our boards and committees and staff and held some sort of a retreat to line out, I guess, a course of action or plans that we would like to see accomplished over the next year or five years or whatever, all as a starting point for, you know, what we hope to be able to accomplish, both with our finances as well as our projects. Try to come together and find, you know, our common visions and that sort of thing. I would like for us to do this sooner rather than later, but all that said, I'd ask you guys to look at your calendars, find out what kind of obligation or commitment you'd be able to make for the retreat, probably looking at, you know, a half a day to a day of really going over some stuff. And we'll need to give Joe Don time to pull, you know, information together so that we'll have, you know, what we need in order to make plans. But that is something I do want your feedback regarding, and it's something I'd like to start us planning for and probably get an agenda posted for something of that nature before long.
That concludes my report. Council have any questions?
Probably can do that in the next month, two months, maybe once. What should we be looking for on our calendars?
If we could, I, the quickest I could even commit to something like that would be the third week of this month, and so I'm not, but I wouldn't want to drag it out more than, you know, two or three months. If we got it done in the next six weeks, I'd feel pretty about it.
Well, you want recommendations for committees?
Kind of a retreat, jumping off point for strategic planning.
It may be helpful to get it done before we start the budgeting process.
And that's why sooner rather than later.
Day, preferred day of the week, or anything?
Unfortunately, it looks like maybe Saturday.
Normally, when we've had it in other communities where I've been in and had a retreat such as this, it has been a Saturday event, and typically, they are planned for all day. Whether or not it lasts all day or not is another thing, but they do typically plan for it to be all day long. Would be something that if we did that and had an all-day event like that, we would bring in lunch and that sort of thing, to be able to have a working lunch to alcohol again. I would anticipate that department heads would be here for that event also. Matter of fact, I've already told them that we're going to be planning one and that they will be required to be here. Any required to participate in?
Any other questions, council?
Maybe by next council meeting, we can come up with things that work.
That would be good. And I'd say if you have anything in the meantime, communicate those with Joe Don or myself, and that way we maybe have consensus before we meet next. And we can finalize it then. I don't have anything else, so City Business Managers' report, Mr. Dunn?
Well, we've actively working on four, five different projects right now. In the planning stages are, is the South Share Hanger repaired. Currently, the City of Alba is developing a plan to repair the South Share Hanger. Options are being, are anticipated to be presented to the airport board at their next meeting. Once the plan has been fully approved, staff will proceed with the necessary, take the necessary steps to make them happen. The, did talk a little bit about the ALC Master Plan. Board gave, was presented, proposed master plan on the January 20th meeting. They did recommend some changes, which are currently being made. Once these changes have been made, the revised plan will be taken back to the board, and I would anticipate that another, a revised plan from their comments will be taken back to the board at the board's meeting in February. The transfer station that we have been working on for so long, DQ gave on the 21st, was here to inspect, they found a couple of minor issues which needed to be corrected, but they did approve the permit for the facility for operations, and we started transferring trash collecting, city trash collections from that facility to Mino, and are no longer using the Abar location. Our next step will be to meet with the sanitation committee and see how we proceed with the recycling issue that I know that a lot of citizens in the community have asked for. We will also need to be addressing a few other things at the sanitation committee meeting, so I would anticipate that we try to have that at the next, after the next council meeting for that committee members, for those committee members. Our AMR project, currently Ferguson has replaced about a little over 2,000 meters. We have a little over 3,000. This week, they will be wrapping up batch four, which is routes, which is our books, 16 through 20. This represents about 83% of the meters in Alba Utility System. With my interviews with Ferguson this weekend and today, they feel as if the project's moving ahead very nicely. They're having a few issues with broken valves on meters that we're having, they're having to inform us of broken valves, and we're having to go out and fix it before they can actually make the meter change, so they're having a few of those problems. They are bringing in additional people this week for small meter replacements, and approve for large meter replacements will be here in the next two weeks. City staff is seeing some problems with the equipment picking up the reeds as we drive by, the way it should be. Those are some minor tweaking errors, we have to go back out to those meters after they've been replaced, and either raise them and get it closer to the lid, or put a plastic lid on it, or something to make it where that signal can get out of the, get out of the box. And these are what we, we're considering just fine-tuning the system to make sure it works efficiently. When Ferguson completes their portion of the project, they are slated to be finished or contractually required to be completed in, by April 30th. We've got the Young and Eighth Street project that we've been working on. This project has been advancing very nicely. It was a 120-day project, they've completed the installation along Monroe Street, they tied that, they tied Monroe and Young Street in today, they had completed the, or they are in, this week they will be completing the installation along Young Street. After that, they'll be moving over to Eighth Street and tying that, tying that part of the system in. If all goes well, and we are hoping that we are able to do the tile overs from the old, old water line into the new water line over, over Spring Brack at Beth College. That way, there would be very, very limited inconvenience on residences. There have been some citizen inconveniences and some citizen issues, we have been trying to address them as we've been, as they've been made aware to, aware to us, and will continue to do so. And mayor and council, that would be my report at this time. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunn? Joe? Item number seven, Discussion and Action on the Appointment of City Representatives to Negotiate on the City's Behalf for the Fiscal Year 2016-2017 IAAF Local 3782 Union Contract.
This is an item we bring before the board every year to appoint the negotiating team. The last couple of years, it has been, it's consisted of two council members, Councilman Miller and Councilman Benson. It has gone, in my opinion, it's gone very well near those negotiations, but Councilman Miller and Councilman Benson may have other comments to add on to the negotiations. One of the things, we, this is about the same time we are at, we appoint this team every year. We have not received any requests to start the meetings for the union at this time, but we'd like to go ahead and get the council, the team appointed at the request of Mr. Miller and Mr. Benson, at least for whoever comes into this, this appointing for this task for this year. We set some time, set some time apart for their conversations with our labor attorney to maybe outline a plan and what we would like to see, do some changes. As our labor attorney has gone through the contract, he has pointed out a few deficiencies that we would like to try to correct, and we just like to try to get that, get everybody on board with that at the beginning. But this is something we've done every year. We had to hire outside negotiators in the past, but at least for us, for right now, this system seems to be working pretty well.
Councilman Benson, do you have any problems representing us again?
No, I do not.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Miller and Councilman Benson to negotiate on the City's behalf for the FY 2016-17 IAAF Local 3782 Union Contract.
I'll second before they change their mind.
I have a motion from Dr. Hannaford, second from Councilman Valencia, to appoint Bryce Benson and Wes Melon as a City Representative to negotiate on the City's behalf for the Fiscal Year 2016-2017 IAAF Local 3782 Union Contract. Is there any further discussion?
I will say I did ask Councilman Miller right before as well.
Anything else? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item number eight is Discussion and Action on Authorizing the City Business-
She never called my name.
Benson?
Yes.
Sorry.
Discussion and Action on Authorizing the City Business Manager to Prepare Bid Information and Advertise for the Repair of the Roof at the Library.
Well, in July of 2014, the City contracted to have roof repairs done at the library. These were done, it corrected some of the issues, we thought it had corrected all of them, but obviously it has not. The leaks had moved to other spots on the, in the roof. We did have, we were investigating whether the roof drains were leaking, we did have that checked, that came back as not being a issue. Engineers had examined and had made recommendations that the roof be replaced. We'd like to advertise for sealed bids to replace the roof. We do expect that the project will exceed the $50,000 written quote criteria and will require some sealed bids. We did investigate the ability to have this declared as an emergency and be able to forego the bid process, but we do not feel, or I do not feel, that we can legitimately make that request and have it, have our decisions backed up by fact. Anything that we would have would be speculation at this point. The City, we do expect it to be more than 50,000. Engineers do believe that it will, but it would be less than 75. We, currently, we have $40,000 budgeted for library building improvements for us to continue with this project. When it comes in and gets approved, then we would be looking at either budget transfer from other areas, or, or simpler way to put that is not doing some projects that we have budgeted money for and moving those funds to, or at least a portion of those funds to the library for the completion of this, of this project, or we would be looking at doing a budget limit, taking anything that is additionally needed to complete the library improvements out of, out of reserves. My inclination at this point would be that I would not recommend taking anything out of reserves, I would recommend that we not, we're going to end up not doing the Public Works Project, Public Works Expansion Project, at least in its entirety this year. There may be enough funds in it for this year to maybe get it started and do a portion of the work, but that's not, I'm not willing to start that until we have more, a more definite cost of repairing the library roof. Right now, as the specs are being talked about, the plan would be to leave, leave the actual method of roof repairs open. There would be certainized specs because I know we've got different vendors that all have a little bit different idea about what would fix it, and if we give them the opportunity to present their alternative and the cost that would be involved in repairing that, and then we could make the determination as to which method of repair would best suit the City of Alba. I would expect that once we got the bids back in, once we advertised and got them back in, be a committee of about three individuals set aside to determine what is the best method of repair, that committee, I would anticipate to be made, the co-enforcement officer for the City of Alba, Randy Giatru, and a council member.
Is this taking off the roof and putting on a new one, or are we leaving?
You're talking about repairing? No, this would be, this is a total roof replacement. In the, in the specs right now, because there's not a lot of internal support, one of the things that they would have to do is remove off of the roof, current roof, the equivalent amount of weight, so as not to add any additional weight to the structure, but this would be a completely new roof.
What type of roof is there now?
Right now, yeah, well, it's a flat roof, be just a tar, tar, tar and gravel. They have come back with a foam product and did our patches that we did last year that worked, but it just moved, the leaks just moved to a different spot. But I've talked to several different people that have, that have different alternatives, whether it be a pitched nutter roof, or whether it be a TPO product, or another, has been with a potential vendor today about a product that he's used around town, that would not be a pitched roof, but it would be a roof replacement product.
The library board is really open to any alternatives to what, what they have, whether it be a pitched roof, a flat roof. They're, they're just willing to, and pleased that we're, that we're looking at trying to replace the entire roof, and I think that will make some huge strides down there.
From what I've talked with vendors about it, the pitched roof of it, I don't think it would change the aesthetics of the building that much. Would raise the, would raise the roof line at the top a little, in the front a little bit, or along Seventh Street a little bit, would have it sloped to the back, we'd have to put in some guttering in the back. And we did, if we went pitched with what I've been presented so far, we'd have to put some guttering in the back of the building to funnel the water out of the pocket park, otherwise it would potentially mess up a lot of, a lot of that effort that I know friends at the library and the library board have put a lot of effort into that pocket park that's over there.
If approval would be the timeline to kind of replace this or get it done?
Bid process, I would anticipate the advertisements to hit the papers either this weekend or next. Two-week advertising timeline, should be able to start it, start the project toward April. This week we should be able to start it, if we get the bids in and if all the, if we meet all those deadlines that we need to meet.
There's no recourse or anything? I guess I'm a little confused on why we elected to repair the roof a year ago instead of putting new one on.
We thought that, we, we thought as staff, that that was one of, between the conversations with the library and the staff there and the building inspector and the intelligence we had at the time, we thought that that was what would have fixed the problem. When we did put that, that, that product on, the area that was leaking, that area's not leaking any longer, but it has moved to another area of the library.
Now, is that because we forced more water somewhere else with our patches, or?
I couldn't definitively say why that has happened, I just know that's what's happened.
What?
And the patch worked for a while.
I think that if the patch fixed the spot that moved water where it shouldn't be, then maybe the people that patched our roof should be a little liable.
Well, they, we, I only asked them to fix the area that the patch. And there is warranty on that. But if they fixed it and fixed it in such a way, raised that area and moved the water somewhere else? But I guess, I guess my question would be, would they have reasonably known that they were going to transfer that water? Some part of me says they should have, and some part of me says, well, maybe they wouldn't have known. And the patch lasted and worked for nearly when, no, actually it worked for nearly a year before it started leaking somewhere else. Well, I'm not against a new roof, I'm all for that, it's just unbelievable. Well, we are looking at some other issues that are along with, that went along with that, as far as damage to the roof that was never reported, that I've been made aware of, and we are, so we're looking at that area also.
Damage from work done on it, or damage from storms?
Yeah, storm damage.
Is insurance going to look at that?
It'll be turned in, it'll be turned in insurance.
There'd be motion to approve this.
Remove that we authorize the city business manager to prepare bid information and advertise for the repair of the roof of the Alba Public Library?
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Valencia, second by Councilman Miller, to authorize the city business manager to prepare bid information and advertise for the repair of the roof at the Alba Library.
Now, I want to make clear though, that that repair means a new roof. It's a new roof, yes, we are going out to bid for a new roof.
Any other questions? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item number nine is discussion in action to accept 2016 REAP grant in the amount of $25,000 for purchase of polycarts.
If you remember, oh, back during, a few months ago, we came to council and signed a resolution to apply for a $50,000 REAP grant for the purchase of a polycar, to start a polycar program. They went through the REAP process, we were notified on, I was notified verbally on January 12th, and we got the paperwork in finally today. The contract in for the grant, they did award us $25,000. Our OIDA representative, Ms. Yvonne Phil State, is here, if she'd like to make any comments about it, okay?
Well, I'll make it quick. There were, let's see, 35 REAP grant applications for $1,407,000. The amount approved was $1,43,000. And then after that was approved, the state came back and cut it three more percent. REAP was able to have interest account and deobligated previous stuff that they didn't need the money to keep the amount that they had agreed on for these. Of the 35 grant applications, four were declined, these were mostly for equipment and chip and seal. Nine received full funding, they requested, these were mostly infrastructure, storm sirens, small towns with very, very small tax revenue. There were 18 that received partial requests, a lot of these were water meters and some street repairs. Alba has received funding every year but one since this started, and it's the largest community in this college. That's it.
The funding period for this project will be January 13, 2016, through July 13, 2017. So, we would not anticipate making any expenditures on this project till after we've gone through the budget process, so it'll be part of our budget funds next year. We would be matching this grant with another, at least another $25,000 for the purchase of polycarts. With the approval of this, and once the council has approved accepting the grant, we will need to meet with the sanitation committee to start the process of developing the plan on the implementation of the polycarts. If we phase it in like we have initially discussed with staff, like staff has initially discussed, we phase that in, where do these first set of polycarts go? How do we start rolling those out? Doesn't take any more equipment on our part, our trucks will already have flappers on the back that are geared up to pick these polycarts up and dump them. For the majority of our residences, it probably will, for anybody that's an alley pickup, wouldn't make, it's probably not going to make any difference on the way they are putting out their trash now, they probably already have their barrels out by the curb, they can stay out, by, I mean, out by the alley, can stay in the alley, not discontinuing at any alley, any alley pickup service. People that are currently having to bring their trash to the curb and set their, set their bags out or whatever, will after, you know, will roll the polycar out. And we'll be doing away with the picking up out of the self-purchased trash cans. And we'll go to these polycarts, they will be numbered, and they will be assigned to addresses. So we'll be able to tie a polycar to an address.
Is there a motion to be made?
Well, I have a question, what happens if we accept this, we budget for it next year, and we have even more tax problems and can't match it? Well, this, this would be, if, since we've got grant funds tied to that money, this would not be, this would be one of the last things that we would take money away from. So, I only saying, this would, this would be a priority project, it would be, it would be, we wouldn't be taking money away from this project. And we would know, you know, we'll have a pretty good idea going into the budget year as to what we're funding, and we'll be building our budget based on that. Okay, thank you.
With so much need for streets, roofs, and other building repairs, is it really wise to get into this business model with declining revenue?
Well, the, it's anticipated that the safety, I mean, the safety aspect of the, what we, our employees are faced with now, because if they're picking up plastic trash bags out of, off the street, which could have sticks in them, or, you know, needles in them that we're unaware of, and the exposure that our employees have at that point, I think this is a very worthwhile project to pursue and to at least start phasing in. Doesn't have to be done all at once, but there are liabilities that we face every day and our employees face every day, from insulin needles or whatnot that's in the trash cans, and, and people just throwing their, throwing their, and people putting their bags out and our employees hurting their backs. The workers comp potential is pretty high in this area. So, but...
How many claims for that have we had in the last Congress call with this comp on Thursday?
I'd have to go back and research how many claims we have had in the sanitation department. I know there have, I know that we have vaccinated, this is, vaccinated several employees because they've been stuck with a needle over the past three years. But I would have to look at the back injuries and that's, that sort of claim before I would be willing to say, I mean, we have.
I think it's important to remember that as a council, we voted to apply for the REAP grant for this purpose.
John Don, is there any benefit to amending the budget and doing that this budget year?
Say that again?
Is there any benefit or can it be done to amend this year's budget to be able to utilize both the grants?
We have until, we have until, they have, we, they have to give us notice to proceed. Once they have given us notice to proceed, we have until July of 2017 to finish the project. So if we saw that it was, it could be done this year, then yes, we'll be good, this budget, with a budget limit.
So when you say finish the project, does that go to polycarts in its entirety?
No, that's to implement, that's to-
Just this portion?
Just to finish this portion of it, yes. The plan that we submitted for implementation was a phased-in implementation over three to five years.
If this were denied, would we literally just be giving up $25,000?
We would be giving them back $25,000. I'll make a motion to accept the 2016 REAP grant in the amount of $25,000 for purchase of polycarts.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Eckhart, to accept the 2016 REAP grant in the amount of $25,000 for the purchase of polycarts. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item number 10 is discussion in action to appoint contract fiscal signatories on 2016 REAP contract.
This, along with the REAP grant, this is something we have to do every year, and that is to basically tell OIDA who has authorized the sign, the contract, and make, sign financial reports to OIDA on how it's spent and how to request reimbursement. Typically, the, well, the mayor is required to be one of these people, and typically the other two have been the city treasurer and the city business manager. At this point, staff's recommending the continuation of these people as signatories.
I'd make a motion to appoint the mayor, city treasurer, and city business manager as contract fiscal signatories on the 2016 REAP contract.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Benson, to appoint the mayor, city treasurer, and city business manager as contract fiscal signatories on the 2016 REAP contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Item number 11 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker. Speaker must identify, stand and identify himself or herself. Public comment?
I didn't understand what you said, Mayor.
It's time you can talk.
It's time for public comment. If anybody would like to stand and identify yourself, and you have two minutes.
You don't have very much time. I had comments with the city manager and Dr. Hannaford the other day about the Young Street water line project. I've been all over town lately, looking to see where water meters are. Most ever one I've found is in the corner, is one on the west side. Fire hydrant, I said water meter, I meant fire hydrant. But anyway, there's one side, west side of the college dorm now, one at the other corner, one up south. Now they put a new water meter in 100 feet west of Monroe Eighth Street. So then they've remeasured all these things, there's one in a yard south, about 100 yards south, 100 feet south of the college dorm. I've got a water meter in my front yard that's not as far as from here to Joe Dunham's chair from my front door. Always before, there've been two water meters at the corner, both now say out of service. They've been on the old water line, or they're no good. I don't know why a water meter, a water hydrant, I keep saying meter, couldn't be placed in a more convenient area. Dr. Hannaford said tonight that possibly mine could be relocated. It seems to me like there's been very, very little attention to that project by anybody except the installer. When they put my water hydrant in my yard, they said, this is the stupidest thing we've ever did on our project, that an engineer would recommend placing a water meter in someone's front yard. Now, that's just from the laborer, that's not the head people that, the installer. But I just feel like that there's two water meters on, water hydrants on Young Street, one south of the college in the front yard, and one in my yard, that I suspect 10 years from now, 15 years from now, when my kids sell my property, it can affect the value of the property by any amount unimaginable with a water hydrant, fire hydrant, 20 feet or 22 feet from my front door. And I just think it's time that the city people around here, not necessarily just Joe Dunham, but somebody needs to be a little bit more attentive to what's going on when you hire someone to do a project. Especially when the installer thinks it was stupid where they put the fire hydrants to start with. So hopefully this can be rectified.
Thank you, Mr. Harbick.
You know, they want us to beautify our yard. Well, when I open my front door, there's that darn fire hydrant. So why should I even try? Down the street, there's a yard that looks like heck, and you all haven't ever done anything about it. They say, well, you need to sign a paper. Paper's been signed by a man that's dead and gone, and nothing has been done about it. There's nobody been there for three months, there's an old pickup in the back, and there's a car. Now, to me, if you really want to make our town beautiful, you need to do something to make it look beautiful. What do you think, Mr. Dunham?
I think that the address that you're talking about is an issue, it's been an issue since before I got here.
Oh, yeah, it's been a long time.
And we have contacted, since I've been here, we have contacted the property owner on no less than three occasions, and had plans on both those occasions, submitted those for cleanup. At this point, maybe we are past that, but-
You neglected, you neglected in getting it done, because it's been several, several years. Sure, I've had cancer, and I know, and it's, I can see that every day, and that's just like the fire hydrant.
Thank you, Mrs. Harbick.
I'll speak up. I basically came here tonight to support my neighbor, because sometimes when stupid is obvious, you gotta speak up about it. And a fire hydrant in his front yard, where it is, is stupid. First, it's a two-way hydrant, you can always only going to cover Young Street. If it moves down to the corner, you got four ways, you got four streets, there are two different streets it is covering. Parking's an issue. Probably the reason most fire hydrants are put on corners is because you can't park by a corner to start with, and you can't park by a fire hydrant. We've lost a lot of parking on Young Street because of these fire hydrants, because you still can't park on the corners. But the whole, the whole project seems to be kind of out of place, of why it got put over into the yards and destroyed people's yards. Every driveway on the east side of Young Street is a patch cut out of it. Oh, yeah, they say they'll reconcrete it. You're not ever going to put a 30-inch strip of concrete across the driveway and for it to not break, or sink, or whatever. For years, you're going to be, every time you mow your yard, you're going to wonder whether- or not you're gonna fall into that trench, because it'll sink, it'll have holes, sinkholes appear in it. Pretty obviously, after the other day when the water ran down Young Street, went into that trench, that poplar, never surfaced again till it got down to South Hall, where they, where it was ended. The water comes out, flows back on the street, down there, back down to the highway. That trench obviously isn't packed very tight, because all of that whole block, it was not one spot in there that stopped the water from flowing down that, that trench, that trench that's already been filled in. I think you need to, as Carl said, you need to check on who's doing things and the plans that were done. Young Street's supposed to be redone after this. In fact, to me, it'd been a lot simpler or a lot better to have put it in the street, so it would have been just resurfaced and done, instead of everybody's yards being torn up, everybody's driveways being torn up. My other comment is your deal on your poly containers, trash cans. I don't know of many cities that have ever done that, that's, that's, has a wind, that that's ever been very successful, because you're all the time having to run those containers down. So, it's be good to put an address on them, so that they'll know where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frenchall.
I'm too mad. I'd say something I didn't want to thank.
Is there any other comment? Item number 11 is remarks and inquiries, or excuse me, 12 remarks and inquiries by Councilmembers.
So, are those issues that can be brought into council discussion, that they brought up, or something that we can put on the agenda to see about correcting the fire hydrant location in particular?
Well, they can be put on agenda.
Can I request that we put on the agenda?
I'd like to see it taken care of before two weeks, personally. But we can put it on agenda.
I would be livid if it was in the middle of my yard. And I own a lot of yards, and not one of the fire hydrants in the city of it.
Does that require a change order to the project, Ben?
It's gonna require a little bit, some, some, some extra things that would be handled administratively, won't have, won't have to come, doesn't have to come back here to council to correct, as far as the hydrant is concerned. There are limitations that we do have to, there are rules that we do have to abide by from DEQ that dictate placement. We do have, we do have a little bit of leeway in there, but not a lot. And that's the way the plans were originally submit, drawn up and submitted, were to conform to DEQ permit requirements. It is a DEQ, a public water supply line, that does have to be DEQ permitted, and those requirements have to be met. But there are, there is leeway in there for some corrections coming in.
Anything else, Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, I am on the Governor's Council for Workforce and Economic Development, and Friday, we had our first quarterly meeting, and I'd like to, at, at a point in the future, maybe present some of that information to council, and argue with you about a time that we can do that, that would not be maybe on a short agenda meetings, but just to kind of discuss what we're doing at the, on the state level, what's going on as far as how that ties back into our, our local economy with workforce and economic development, what they're doing at the state, and kind of that's at the council, so that if we have something that, that council would like for me to take back to that group, and that could also be something that we discuss at the workshop. So, if there's things that want to go to the state level, we can take that down there and present that. Right now, Northwest Oklahoma only has two people sitting on that, on that board, there's about a board of about 40 people. There's only two people from Northwest Oklahoma, so anything that we can take down there from here is beneficial to all of Northwest Oklahoma and Northwest Alabama.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say that we, we are sorry for the inconveniences and the problems that we've caused, and hopefully we'll get those things fixed, and Mr. Frenchall, we have discussed exactly what we talked about, that were mistakes made, and we talked about some ways that we can do things differently to make sure those things don't happen again. So, hopefully we can.
We'll adjourn the meeting of the Albe Utility, or, excuse me, Albe City Council and open the meeting of the Albe Utility Authority. The clerk, please call a vote.
Miller?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Manson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hannaford?
Item number three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19, 2016, and approval of claims in the amount of $31,524, and payroll expenses of $26,559.14. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Fisher, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Okay, we will close the meeting of the Albe Utility Authority and open the meeting of the Albe Economic Development Authority. The clerk, please call a vote.
Melton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
And Fisher?
Here.
Item number three is discussion in action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19, 2016, and approval of claims in the amount $11,089.15, and payroll expenses of $5,521.30. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Melton, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Melton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all.
We will have a water circle, maybe, maybe following this.